Our next speaker is Michael Coat. Please unmute.
Good evening. I'm here today to lend my support towards the plan to move forward and allow Option 1 students the opportunity to resume in-person education in the classroom. As the father of twin kindergarteners, I understand how critical it is for younger kids to get the hands-on learning at this age, and I have witnessed the pitfalls and lack of motivation six hours a day in front of a computer screen can do to a child. I sit here baffled as to why we have been sitting in meetings, listening to the top health officials you hired for their opinion, to then turn around and do the exact opposite. They advise a vaccine is not a cure-all, as the herd vaccine will not be happening anytime soon. So why are we all discussing the need to wait for a vaccine before heading back to work? Tonight, I will be reading a letter to the school board written by a VB middle school educator. Dear school board members, I know tonight you face a difficult decision affecting a lot of people in Virginia Beach, and I'm writing to ask you to please listen to the medical experts. You have been given their guidance and data, and you can put your own ideas aside and lean on people who should be most trusted in our community to make a decision such as this one. I am tired. As teachers in Virginia Beach School and a parent of four children, I am so tired. I'm tired of trying to do what's best for my own students and knowing that none of this is coming remotely close. I am tired of worrying, and not about the virus, but about the disappearing students who are there one day and gone the next. I'm tired of trying to keep up with my own four children, who are treading along, but not anywhere near where they need to be. I'm tired of hearing the phrase "we can catch them up later," while having high school students, one a junior, who lacks the time to get caught up. I'm tired of hearing the phrase "we're all in the same boat," because nothing could be further from the truth. I drive past a private school in session every day. My children have friends in private school who are playing sports and going to school, and they wonder, "How's that fair? Why not us?" Since when did the gap between public and private education become so large? Everyone has a choice, except for the kids who want to go back in school. They are given no choices. The private schools are full, and so on and on we go, trying to make a sense of being out of the classroom for almost a year. When will it ever end? As a teacher, I'm not afraid to be in the classroom. I have fellow teachers saying they are afraid, yet they do not spend their weekends at restaurants or stores, even on vacation. I know the older population is at risk, but I can't help but notice them getting dinner out and running errands, all while my children sit at home. How is school any different? I refuse to use this as a political platform, as it is not fair to the students and does not support the mission of public education. Virginia Beach used to be one of the best districts in all the state, yet we can't accomplish getting kids back in school. How are counties and cities all over the state making it work, even Chesapeake, and we can't? I became a teacher not because I love my content, but because I love students, every single one of them. Education is not just giving kids information or teaching them new facts. Education is knowing the whole person, what makes them excited, what upsets them, what helps them understand and process the material. I love watching students' lights come on as they understand or get excited about new material. I love talking and being with students. That's my very favorite part. Am I afraid to go back to the classrooms? No, but I am terrified of what is happening the longer we stay out. Some teachers may not want to go back, and that is okay. That is their choice. However, the priority in your decision should be the students. They're the ones suffering. Educating students is essential. Tonight, let the medical experts decide. Join them in determining the face-to-face is best for students who choose to do so. Then use your time, efforts, and resources to fight for teachers to be next in line for the vaccine. Many areas of the state already have teachers getting the vaccine this week. Fight for better pay and better resources. Be a champion for both students and teachers and the people of Virginia Beach who elected you. Please allow us all to have a choice in how to educate our children. I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you. Speaker number 80 is not online, and our last speaker will be Chris Just, who was an in-person speaker asked to come on Zoom. So, Chris Just, please unmute.
Fantastic. Can you guys hear me?
Loud and clear.
All right. Well, congratulations. You've made it to the end. Thank you all for being so patient and for getting through so many speakers. That does a true testament to you all. I can't imagine how tired you are. I, you know, listening to the, I don't know, dozens upon dozens of folks before me, I've learned a few things tonight. I've learned that if you say, "I want what's best for our students," and you follow that statement with "but," you're probably a VBEA member. That's what I've gotten so far. I've learned that after hearing everybody talk, I also stand with the teachers and staff by reminding them it is called "at-will employment," and they have a choice. So, I understand people are scared, but if the VBEA spent half the time educating people on the reality of what's going on, we wouldn't have to hear all the fear mongering. You know, the teachers and the staff do have a choice, unlike the Option 1 families that are currently being held hostage. It's not fair. And I'm not going to go over all the data that you have all heard all night long, over and over again, since the summer. I checked my email. I sent you guys an email on July 23rd with the first, what I thought was the real credible dataset establishing reopening schools as safe. And we have since then, since July, over and over and over and over and over and over and over, all over the country, all over the states, confirmed that to be true. We've confirmed it to be true with your own data, with your reopening that we cut short for no reason back in October or November, or whenever it was. And now you've had your doctor advisors' last meeting confirm the exact same thing, confirm the data that we had from back in July, that we've confirmed over and over that it's safe to reopen. Okay? And above all else, guys, again, I've heard all the speakers and everybody being afraid and what could possibly happen, but the problem is, this is not a vacuum, guys. You cannot ignore all the open private and parochial schools right here. It's a live experiment that we're watching going on now, and it's safe. I have one child that's over at Cape Henry Collegiate. They have not closed. They've done a fantastic job with the mitigations. And here's what I'm going to tell you. You might be short on contract tracers. Here's what you're gonna find, just like you're gonna find all over the country, that the transmissions are going from the adults to the kids, and it's coming from not school, but at home. Again, that's established at this point. We don't have to look anywhere. It's there. That's why we don't need more studies. We don't need more models. It's there. Look at our neighbors, the school a mile away from us. It's all there. Open up, folks. Get this over and done with. Let's, you know, Dr. Spence, I know you're against people kind of having an us-versus-them mentality, but you've heard it. That's just increasing at this point. Let's pull the Band-Aid off, get the kids back in school, and here's what I would challenge you guys. Here's the big difference I noticed between private and parochial schools and what VBCPS has done. Those schools have an attitude of, "How can we stay open?"
30 seconds.
And keep our kids in face-to-face, whereas here, we're just fighting for it to go back to school. Let's switch the attitude, get the kids back in school. Thank you. Please do the right thing tonight. Have a good night.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, that was our last speaker of the evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that leads us to our remaining agenda item, Action Item C. And I will turn it over to, and that would be, again, the plan updates, continuation from the workshop, and the chance to absorb all these speaker remarks. And so I now turn it over to staff.
Yes, ma'am. That'll be me, Madam Chair. So, as you know, the presentation from the workshop earlier this evening included comments from Dr. Lindsay. That statement was shared with you all. And of course, she's not here to reiterate those points, and I don't intend to. There was a brief discussion about vaccinations. We're certainly happy to answer questions about that. And just in brief, then, I'll speak to recommended changes to the proposal that I brought to you at our last work session. That recommended change is a delay in the start time that we proposed to begin bringing students back to school in phases, beginning with the elementary, pre-K to 5 and grade 6, as well as self-contained special education students in pre-K through 12 who are identified for that purpose. And then there would be a monitoring timeframe for that, and then we would recommend bringing back middle school 7 through 8 and high school 9 through 12 for in-person instruction on a hybrid model, beginning on February the 22nd. The delay in our recommended proposal from last week is based on information that came to my attention two ways, particularly over the last 24 hours. One, from my, our internal health team led by Mary Shaw. You heard from her during the work session about her concerns about bringing students back on the 19th and our ability to internally do the contact tracing that we do and then report to the Health Department. And then you heard Dr. Lindsay specifically state her recommendation that we not open on the 19th and that, should we open for in-person instruction during this surge, that there would be, and I think I'm roughly quoting here, but they would not be able to provide optimum support for contact tracing and infection control in the community and for the schools. So that was the reason for the proposed delay. It was my sense that the delay would give us some time to continue to assess that data and to work with our internal staff, as Ms. Shaw and I discussed during the work session, and with the Health Department, to ensure that that mitigation of contact tracing could and would be in place by the time we return to in-person instruction. That mitigation was one of the four, excuse me, one of the five strategies recommended by the CDC as mitigation strategies that needed to be in place, and that would be part of a self-assessment, which was their third key metric for the opening of schools. And since that fifth strategy of contact tracing is not currently in place, then I was, I am recommending a delay. In addition to that, I mentioned to you all that I was going to be seeking some authority to continue to monitor that as we headed towards that start date and work closely with the Health Department and our internal health staff to make a decision about whether or not we needed to delay that further. That seems to have been dramatically misconstrued this evening as somehow my attempt to overthrow our democracy here locally, but I do want to be clear that that's not my intention. My intention was that you all would vote that we would, up or down, on this change to our plan, and that we would begin in-person instruction with a delay from the proposal from last week, based on that information I just shared, and that the authority that you would leave to me would simply be to delay further if that was what the Health Department was sharing with us. So I think it was misconstrued in some ways, because, you know, as we heard tonight a few times, folks were saying, "Don't, you know, give up your authority to vote on this recommendation." And obviously, that's not what we're asking you to do. So I will happily leave that on the table, but also certainly willing to withdraw that if you all see that that's a concern. My intention was to have the flexibility to move us back further if we needed to, if the Health Department was giving us that advice, almost a sort of pending the ability to do contact tracing conversation, but that's certainly something we can talk about. So that's my recommendation in full, and I'll pause there. We're, staff is here and on Zoom and available to answer questions that you may have before your vote.
And procedure, do we first put out a, do we need to, since this is an action item, should we start with a motion on the floor?
Yeah. If you want any further discussion, we'll share that.
All right. So for the sake of being able to proceed with discussion and introduce whatever else, I will entertain a motion to consider the administrative plan as presented on the screen. Is there a motion? Mrs. Riggs, and a second. Do we have our Zoom participants still with us?
Yes, I'm here. Do you need a second?
We do.
Second.
Okay. So now it's on the floor for discussion, and we're starting with Mrs. Riggs.
Okay. I made the motion because I want to be able to discuss it. So we need to move this, move this thing along. And my question, I felt that that's what you meant when you sent that letter out too, Dr. Spence, but that's not what a lot of people are feeling about giving you the authority. So my question to you about that part of the decision is, before making that decision to further back it up, you'll be contacting us if we're giving any kind of information out to the public?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I mean, what I wrote to you all and talked about in that email today was that it would be with sufficient notice to the board and the community. And so it wasn't an intention that it would just be done. It would be done with sufficient notice to you all and then to the community. And again, it wasn't to change this plan to reopen schools. It was only to potentially delay those dates further if it was determined by our consultation with the Health Department that that was necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, that was the specifically stated purpose. There was no other purpose other than that was the authority I was looking for, was to potentially further delay these dates within consultation with the Health Department and our internal staff.
Okay. With that explanation, I'm fine with that. However, if, you know, from the amount of people we've heard from, I'm not sure they are going to be fine with that, but I just, I did want to say that point too.
And I think, yeah.
But I'm, I get it.
And I think that's fine, and I'm certainly happily, happy for you all to tell me that you're not willing to do that. My concern, which I've also heard tonight on a number of occasions, is just the continued, "Here we go again, two weeks later. We've got to go back through this whole conversation, and people don't know what's going to happen." And, and that was really, I think, what was driving that, was the desire to not have to, like, relitigate this again, you know, because the idea would be that you'd have a plan to open and that we would only be delaying it, not doing anything different than that. But again, I'm happy to withdraw that request and have you, I mean, I think if you, you know, just take a vote on this, and then if you, if you don't affirm that, then we would have to come back if we were going to change it, and you would vote again on delaying it.
Okay. I mean, I'd be fine with that too. So I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Anderson and then Mrs. Weems.
So, so I had the same type of reservation that Mrs. Riggs spoke of just now. So in my understanding now, just want to make sure that I know what I'm talking about, Dr. Spence. Your authority would be to delay further from February 2nd if the same thing is happening around a little bit before February, so let's say the week before February 2nd. If you find that, or if Dr. Lindsay indicates that, "Well, we're in the same boat we were." So you'd like to have the authority to delay it even further?
This is, this is the precise language that I shared with you and that was shared with our community earlier today about this. This is the precise language. The precise language is, "I'm recommending that rather than continue to return for additional votes on the matter, the school board grant me authority to consult with our internal health staff and the Health Department to determine if this timeline, three weeks from today for a return, will allow us to provide assurances that we can sufficiently meet contact tracing requirements, and if not, to delay further with sufficient notice to the board and community." That was the explicit language of what I was requesting the authority to be able to do, not make unilateral decisions about opening or not opening. You all would be making a decision tonight were you to affirm this recommendation that we were opening for students, and I was merely requesting the authority to delay that further if we weren't able, in consultation with the Health Department, to have assurances that contact tracing could be in place. That is the explicit language that I was sharing with you and was shared with the community.
Okay.
And again, I think that was misinterpreted by some, but certainly not my intention to make unilateral decisions about whether or not we open school for students face-to-face instruction or not. That's your decision. It's been your decision since the beginning of this, and it continues to be that way.
Okay. I just, I just want, no. Ideally, I would love for our teachers to have been vaccinated starting next week, just, or starting tomorrow. Ideally speaking, I would like to have some of our, at least our elementary teachers vaccinated before we bring them back. However, I, I think I've spoken to you, Dr. Spence, and I was, I was, I was really pushing hard to delay anyway. This particular plan is very, very similar to what I have put out into the community that I wanted us to at least delay it until February, is it February 1st or February 2nd? Because...
Excuse me. It would be the week of February the 1st. So it would begin with that Monday, which is an asynchronous day, but obviously, our teachers, and that would be planning for the return of students.
Right. And I, and I believe, I believe it, when you say this gives us a chance to breathe a little bit, and a chance to hope that our community levels of transmission start to come down a little bit. I mean, it can happen. The experts are not predicting that it's going to happen right now, but it can happen, and we need the help of the community to, you know, that's three weeks away. If the community buckles down, I think we can see our transmission rates start coming down, but I can support this as long as I know that that would be the earliest we would begin. And if transmission rates don't come down, and Dr. Lindsay and the health doctors around the area for the Virginia Beach Health Department indicates that we're meeting all of those criterias for mitigation standards, then, then I'm okay with that for now. Like I said, ideally speaking, I'd like to have our teachers be, start being vaccinated. I think that's going to be an important, important factor for them, but I can see the merits of bringing students back to school. On the other hand, I'm real concerned about bringing students back in when our teachers have not been vaccinated. So, I mean, I'm kind of on the fence, but at the same time, I see the merits of, on both sides, so. But as I, as I, I put out, you know, my emails that I responded to lots of people in the community that I was really pushing for at least February, the earliest February 2nd, so I think I can live with this.
Thank you. Mrs. Weems?
I had the same concerns as Ms. Anderson and Ms. Riggs about that part, because we heard it so much tonight about, you know, giving the superintendent authority, and I still have concerns with that. I understand what you're saying, Dr. Spence, because these are rather lengthy meetings, and it's kind of like the same information a lot of the times, although some of the information obviously does change. But I just think as an elected body, that this is not adopting a textbook. This is huge. It's the biggest decision we've ever made, and we're having to make it, you know, several times. I don't think that it would be right for us to give that authority to Dr. Spence. And Dr. Spence, I don't think your weak kneed, or what was that other thing that somebody said tonight? I don't think you're shaking in your boots. I don't think you're weak kneed.
I lost track of the many descriptors of me this evening.
Yeah, and I don't think that you're crossing your fingers, all that stuff. Not at all, and I'm sorry that people have said that, because we know it's not true up here. But I do think that, that if things change, we got to come down here, and maybe the meeting won't be as long, but just for him, just for Dr. Spence to say, "Hey, this has happened. This has happened. I'm not comfortable," or "I am comfortable," and we discuss that. I really do think this is a, I mean, this is why we're paid the big bucks up here, guys, to make these, you know, this is why they elected us to run, and so I think that, I can't support it without in there.
So, so Mrs. Weems, as I, as I mentioned earlier, I'm totally fine with that.
Yeah, I know, and that's what I said.
And so why don't I just to, to not make this the center of deliberation, because I think the center of deliberation should be, "Do we open for students or not?" Withdraw that request.
Well, or at least treat it as two separate.
And if we need to delay further, we'll come back to the board, and we'll, we'll deliberate again.
Or, thank you. Well, that makes it even easier. I was about to just suggest, or I was assuming we would first vote on the plan itself and then tackle the second issue, but you've already taken care of that matter, so, okay. So, anything else before we go to Ms. Owens right now?
Well, I'll just wait. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Owens, and then I'll come back.
Okay. Thank you.
And then Mrs. Manning.
Okay.
I'm not in, we've heard so many speakers today talk about how difficult it is for their children and families to be given the hope and then have the hope yanked away, and that that inconsistency plays an effect in addition to the being home and the things that come with that. I can't support the February 1st date, because in my mind, that is a setup to give the hope and yank it back. We received recommendations from the district health director. She's been recognized for her leadership at the state, national, and international level. You can look her up. She is the specialist in terms of the pandemic. And while I greatly appreciate the medical team input, it is absolutely essential that the highest weight be given to the specialist in public health, the same way that I trusted Dr. Mitchell with my own son's general health for 15 years, but when it came to his special needs, his bones, his mental health, we saw a specialist. As a young parent, Dr. Mitchell helped me to understand the importance of a specialist in order to get the most comprehensive best practices for the child I was responsible for. And now that I'm assigned the responsibility for over 60,000 more children, that lesson that he taught still holds true. For me, following the science means putting the weight on the one medical advisor that we have, whose assigned job title is pandemic safety for our district. And understanding the impact that our decision makes on our community, Dr. Lindsay provided a three-page write-up with eight bullets of information, but the only piece that we're talking about is the contact tracing. The very first bullet, that's reiterated multiple times throughout the document, is that in-person learning should resume when community transmission has decreased below substantial, or at least has stabilized and begins to show a significant downward trend. And she recommends using CDC metrics along with other factors. Our medical panel has told us that CDC metrics are expected to change, so let's wait and see that change and then make decisions based on, on the experts in that field. We literally sat here and heard a single parent staff member gasping for breath, unsure if she's going to get paid, and saying that she hasn't been contacted for contact tracing. To see a significant trend downwards, and I guess maybe we can, you know, try and reach back out to Dr. Lindsay to see what a trend would constitute, I would assume a trend would be at least a seven-day period where we're seeing a downward motion. And to expect that that's going to happen in a timeframe for February 1st seems like a giving hope to yank it away. I would feel much more comfortable and feel much more responsible for having us come back at our next meeting. We know that we have another meeting in January that is before February 1st, and at that point, looking where we're at and making a decision instead of giving people this date that we know realistically is unlikely to have us seeing a downward trend by that point. I can't support the February 1st date. If the date was a little later, maybe, maybe we could expect to see a downward trend, but in order to have a trend, you have to have some days for it to trend. The other thing that is of concern to me in terms of getting back right at that timeframe is the vaccines. Not so much that I need or am suggesting that everybody must be vaccinated before we can get back in, but I do think we will introduce an additional hardship if we have all of our schools back in session at the same time that we're trying to vaccinate all these teachers at the different sites. In order to, you know, have the classes covered and have teachers getting to where they need to be and being able to do it timely, that's harder to do when we're back in session, and I think that that needs to be a consideration as well as we're making these decisions, because getting the vaccinations out to our community and getting past our group so that it can get to the next group, we need to be responsible for making sure that that can happen efficiently so that the next group can, can come on board. I can't support this, this date. Um, but I, I, I would like us to certainly be focused on a plan for return. I would like to see us, uh, returning our special education students and maybe our pre-K and English as a second language learners first. Um, and taking some time not to bring other students back in quite yet so that we give those students the best chance to not have extra exposures and have to have schools closing again. If those are the students that we know are struggling the most and that it's the most critical for them to be in, in school in person, I feel we do them a disservice by bringing in so many more students at the same time when we know the community spread is where we are at the highest risk platform that, that they have made. Uh, it, it's a setup for those students to come out of, of classes sooner than they, than they have to because of the increased quarantines that we will expect to see. Um, so those are my thoughts.
Okay, Mrs. Manning and then Mrs. Holtz.
Okay, um, so I was not fully in favor of Dr. Spence's proposal last week because I personally thought that it waited too long, um, to get our kids back to school. It's been 10 months now. Um, but I supported it because there was a light at the end of the tunnel and I know that Dr. Spence wants to get our kids back to school. But that light keeps getting more dim and the goalposts keep getting moved, as someone said earlier today. Um, so our physician panel, as well as over 25 more local physicians, have contacted us in full support of the proposal that Dr. Spence made last week. And, and these are highly esteemed, um, doctors. Dr. Mitchell actually has a specialty in infectious disease. So I think that he is a very prominent physician to be able to speak on this as well as many of the other physicians that we have seen who have been treating COVID patients. Um, so the physician panel said that keeping schools closed is actually causing harm. They further state that new studies indicate that both students and teachers are safer in school. They stated that research has shown that opening schools actually reduces community transmission rates. Regarding the hospital capacities, they have said that it's not due to COVID patients being in the hospital, but a lack of healthcare workers to treat patients. They have rooms, they have space. They don't have enough healthcare workers because these workers can't pick up extra shifts or they've had to take time off to be at home with their children for virtual school. One of our speakers said, "School is not just a building, it's a community," and I wanted to highlight that. Another speaker in our physician panel has spoken about the horrific mental health prob- problems, including suicides and suicidal ideations by our own students at all-time highs. And they firmly state that it is due to isolation. Our special education students are suffering. All of our students are falling behind. Childhood obesity rates are skyrocketing and this is causing irreversible harm, according to our physician panel. Um, so I read a bipartisan article written by three state senators just this week at the Richmond Times. It was written by two Democrats and one Republican, so very bipartisan. And I just want to read a couple paragraphs from it. It says, "It's time for the General Assembly to act on this critical issue regarding getting students back to in-person learning." "When it goes back, when it goes back into session on Wednesday, we will consider the governor's amendments to Virginia's biennial budget. There should be no new budget approved nor additional funding allocated to school districts unless schools are reopened for in-person learning. The best interests of children should drive every school decision. For 10 months, 1 million children have been barred from public school classrooms without a scientific rationale. It is the duty of the General Assembly to end this shutdown. It's time to reopen schools." I know one of those, um, senators is also a physician. Um, so I'm experiencing firsthand the impacts of virtual instruction as a parent of two Virginia Beach students. And I know, you know, we have two other board members here who have students in our schools. Um, I've curbed my, my business and my volunteer activities so I can be home, um, with my sons because I'm concerned about their mental health. They'll be okay because my husband and I can provide for their emotional and academic well-being. But my heart breaks for those families who don't have that same ability. When I was on, on the way out the door much earlier today, on the way here, my son asked, "Mom, are you gonna be able to get kids back to school tonight?" And my heart sank and I said, "I don't know." However, I will not stop fighting for our kids. Our kids and our families are suffering from isolation. Our special ed- education students can't learn virtually. And so many students are continuing to fall behind. We cannot let one person from the Department of Health override the position of 30 esteemed local physicians. Private schools, Chesapeake schools, and others across the state and country can do it. So can Virginia Beach. And for that reason, I would like to make a substitute motion that we approve Dr. Spence's proposal that he made to the school board last week to return our students back to school, first group on January the 19th, the second group on February 8th, along with the additional, uh, metrics that he requested, um, to use school-related transmission rates and for him to have the authority to shut down classrooms or schools as seen fit in conjunction with consultation by the Virginia Department of Health.
Do we have a second on that, Mrs. Hughes?
Okay.
So we can proceed with the discussion because it probably, they both are overlapping, right? Okay. So we have the two motions on the floor and we'll continue with Mrs. We, we will continue with Mrs. Holtz and then Mrs. Anderson.
I hate to be repetitive and to pile on, but I must because we all have our opinions. But, um, my priority right now is what Mrs. Anderson said, a fast-track vaccination for teachers. I know that's not totally within our power, but I do think we could work 24/7 at it and be influential in the officials that can make that happen. So please do that. And also, um, we, we talked a lot about contract tracing, but Dr. Lindsay also said the transmission rates must show some kind of decline. And I agree with Jessica. I really think February 1st is way too soon. I, I don't see that happening. In fact, I'm, I think it's impossible for it to happen because as she said, a decline, right now, we're at a peak and we're moving upward. Decline means you have to start to come down and that takes some time. So, uh, I'm questioning that. But I will say, Dr. Spence, the media loves talking to you and you're good at it. You need to get the message out that you are not trying to usurp the power of the board. I got three text messages while you were speaking that that's what you were trying to do to us. So it's out there in the public. So I think it's important that you do rectify that. No, I believe you. I believe what you said. But people hear what, people hear different things. Anyhow, uh, I, I think February 1st is too soon. But if we say, well, let's set that date, but we'll look at it again, I'm okay with that. I, I don't have the answer, but, um, I, I, I don't agree with going along with the plan that was first put out. And I, uh, um, we need to wait. How long we should wait, I don't know. So that's my thoughts.
All right, Mrs. Anderson and Mrs. Williams and, and also Madam Clerk, keep me posted on our Zoom colleagues. Thank you.
So, um, the fact that the school system is said to have lower transmission rates than the overall community, which all by the way is on fire with our virus infections, is not at all reassuring. Our school community may not spread the virus as easily as it happens in the community, but the school environment is made up of children and adults from this community. You see, a school system is not separate from the community, but part of it, no matter what its mitigation protocols are. Now, I know some of you still believe that schools can somehow keep the virus from being transmitted because you think our mitigation efforts are working. Well, this theory has only been tested when community spread of the virus has been low. And our mitigation standards are good enough to stop, are, are our mitigation standards good enough to stop the viral spread when the percent positivity rate in our community is over 20%? We don't have the data on this because the community transmission rates have never been this high. That's why there's no data to prove that, that, you know, that, that it's not being spread in the schools when it's 20% or higher. And now there's a new strain of the virus. Now, you all know that this is a stretch for me anyway. I, I, I'm not happy. I would love to see everybody vaccinated first, but I am willing to go with Dr. Spence's original plan as presented tonight. I am not willing to go for students starting back at school on the 19th. That, that is way too soon. And it goes against even, um, what Dr. Lindsay said this evening. With the vaccine already being administered across the state and knowing that our educational community is in the next round to be vaccinated, it seems logical to give the current rollout procedures a little more time for execution. We've already been told that starting January 25th, um, people can start signing up to be vaccinated. We need a few more weeks. There's no reason to rush students back into the buildings when we've come this far because it's reckless, it's a reckless venture that could endanger the health of students and staff. We need to give this holiday surge time to pass. And then the sad part of it is, there's actually a perception that we're throwing everything out the window, that we're pulling out the rug from under, underneath everybody. But just because that's now being told that our mitigation standards have kept the transmission levels low doesn't mean that everyone will be safe. We have to hope that our mitigation standards will work. And so by delaying at least until February 2nd, 1st, 2nd, it's gonna give us a little bit more time. I'm not willing at all to send our students back to the building on January 19th. We don't want to force some teachers to resign or retire mid-year. This could even force our school division to try to carry on without adequate substitutes when they're needed the most. It's gonna force parents to choose to ask for option two for their children, even though they may have to change teachers. I know that virtual instruction's been, instruction's been hard. It's been hard on everyone. It's been hard on our students, hard on our families. It's also been extremely hard on teachers who've had to change their way of delivering lessons and had to learn new technology to, to deliver those lessons. But I'm asking my colleagues to please vote no against this, um, amendment to bring the students back on the 19th. I'm asking you to go ahead, vote no on this amendment and then to go ahead and approve the plan that Dr. Spence has put forward. Thank you. Oh, I have one more thing. I'm sorry. I'd like to add, because I think this kinda goes with what Dr. Spence is saying anyway. I'd like, I'd like the plan that he has put forward to state. Or until the community positivity rates decline continuously for at least seven days and we can meet all mitigation standards. Because that part of it was tonight, we weren't meeting mitigation standards. And I think hopefully, we will start to see a decline. I would love to see that part added in there that we see seven days of some type, type of decline, even if it's two or three percentage points. But I'd like to see a little bit of a decline. If that can't be arranged, at least until we can meet all mitigation standards. Because I think that was the holdup tonight anyway. So, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Hughes.
Uh, yeah, a couple of things. One is, um, as to going to school, keeping the community spread down. You know, I think, I think that there is some wisdom to that. You think about the difference in how your family with school-aged children operates in the summer and how they operate during the school year. Things are a bit more structured. Um, you know, when you, when you know that everything you're doing is at home, maybe parents aren't working right now because they're not able to, you're just not as structured as you normally would be. And so I do think that that structure lends to a bit more order, a bit more controlled environment. Um, as far as when we're getting back to school, I, I'm in favor of the substitute motion here. It seems like before school, the school year started, it was, let's just have the first nine weeks online and then let's wait until Thanksgiving. Well, let's wait until after Christmas break. Let's wait until the end of January. Let's wait until February. We're already getting emails saying, "Well, let's start back next fall." It's just every month, it's another month and another month and another month. And, you know, even at tonight's proposal, we're coming up on a year. And that is a really long time. Yes, our children are falling behind. Nobody would think to just keep their kids out of school for a year and, you know, they're not able to get the instruction that they need. Parents, you know, some parents are probably doing exactly what they should be doing at home, some are not, just like any other time. But there's a reason that, you know, we talk about how our teachers are professionals. They are professionals. They are trained to be able to teach your children in a way that you as a parent at home may not be able to do. And some of this is not going to be able to be made up, particularly for the ones that are at the end of their school career. Particularly for ones that are wired differently and require, you know, our special education students. Um, some of this is not going to get made up and the longer we drag this out, the harder it's gonna be. And my third is, while I don't think shutdowns necessarily were the crux of mental health issues, they have been going on for a while and one of the things doctors have been citing for years is children spending too much time in front of electronics. Whether it's the cell phones or laptops or TVs, they spend too much time with them. Now they're necessarily having to do that. And they're being isolated. So for some, it may be creating issues and for others, it's exacerbating them. But either way, that's not a good thing. So I really think we need to get these children back in school. There is no zero risk anything. There's a risk if you send them. There's a risk if you don't send them. There's a risk when you get in your car and get on the interstate every day, but you need to mitigate, you need to move forward. And, I mean, everybody's needs are different, but there's a big segment of the population whose needs we're not meeting right now. And this is just time that we are not going to get back. And we need to start pushing forward for people.
Okay. You were just checking?
Okay.
So a, a few, uh, a few thoughts of mine that I, I just want to keep reminding my colleagues. Dr. Lindsay talked about lower levels or at least stabilized. So if we could keep both those in, in our mind. Also, uh, and I don't think, and not that anybody here has suggested otherwise, but again, just to remind everybody that, and I stand corrected, but she did not, vaccination is not a, a condition for her, her recommenda- her recommendation, but I think the message was certainly conveyed loud and clear tonight uh, to everybody involved i- in that realm, that, that we are hoping and expecting for, um, and you know, that appreciate Ms. Shaw's comments about just thinking outside the box and, and just pushing. And if it's the city, if it, if the state can help in any way too, but it sounds like it's a local, it's on us locally and I think we do all have to pull together on that. I, I understand the concern about false hope, but then I also think about what the unknown, if it's totally unknown. And I think both, they, they- if it's totally unknown, and I think both, they, they do overlap, they're, neither one is ideal, right? We don't want to give false hope, but to not offer, to just, I think, setting a date that, that there is, that, that is, that has rationale behind it, again, with the pressure on for the vaccines, giving the holiday surge more time. And there's no question, it's a conditional date, but I think it's a date that has, you know, there is rationale to back it up, and, and I, and I think, again, further ac, action on a lot of parts can, can increase the likelihood of, of it moving forward. And in terms of the phasing, which again, is, is a nod to Dr. Lindsay, I do try to look at this as, even though we have 55 elementary schools, they are 55 individual neighborhood schools, it's something we pride ourselves on. And I think each elementary community can work together to do what they can to help make this successful, and we, and it helped me to compartmentalize it a little more, and we got a few emails from parents, and they talked about their specific elementary school and the successful experience back in the fall, and crediting the, the principal of the school and the community of elementary parents who all worked together. And granted, I, I recognize that it was a period of lower community transmission, but I would personally rely on that and feel it is, they've earned that chance to, to try again at this higher level with the support of the division and the extra support and mitigations, and just the higher level of enforcement that we will have in place. Mrs. Weems?
Yeah, I mean, just a couple of comments. You know, when we hear we're just rushing and rushing into this, I, I don't think 10 months is rushing. So, we haven't rushed into this. For some of us, it has, we've compromised and accepted different plans because we're just trying to get these kids back in school, but, but to say we're rushing into this, in my opinion, is, is not a fair statement. I kind of feel the opposite sometimes. We did have a group of physicians that we've been listening to for how, how, when did you get that group together, Dr. Spence?
In the summer was the first time, but I, I mean, and I want to be clear about that and continue to be clear about that, because we referenced panel. We empaneled a group originally to develop a set of metrics that were brought to you as a recommendation.
Right.
That panel has not been empaneled again. We have since then worked with a number of physicians to provide counsel as we've moved forward, and they have offered data that has been shared with you, shared with our community, and you have subsequently heard individually from all, I believe at this point, of the people who served on the original panel, some of whom disagree with that data, and some, most of whom, the vast majority of whom agreed with what was, what was shared with you. So, I just want to
Right.
Kind of be clear about that language, because it's been said a few times tonight, panel, and I just want to remind folks
Okay, well, you know, we, we've had a group of physicians, and, and why, you know, we're thankful for Dr. Lindsay, you know, if you go to Chesapeake, that director of health probably has all different kind of viewpoints, you know, also. So, I, I, I'm very reluctant in putting everything in one person, because if we're doing that, we may as well not be here and discuss it, we'll just let Dr. Spence get on the phone and call that one person, and then we'll just do what that one person says. So, I try to look at the whole group of physicians that we've heard from as soon as last week. We've got emails from some of them that were on that group a few days ago, and then we've got more emails, I counted about 30 from actually doctors, local doctors in this area. So, I'm, I'm not a medical expert, but I'm going to listen to the whole group and the sum, and, and not just weigh it on one person. So, I do, I don't think that we've rushed back. I would like to see the kids get back in school for all the reasons, and, and again, it's for a lot of reasons. It's not just for the mental health, and I, and I hate when someone accuses us of using that as some kind of secret card, and that we don't really care about these people, those faults, mental health issues, ha, mental health issues have been here, the pandemic, you can read anything and ask any doctor, it has not helped it at all, and it has hurt it. It didn't cause it, in some cases, and some it did, but it has not helped it whatsoever, and in fact, it has hurt that, that, that population of folks that struggle with that. So, I'm going to support this plan first, and then I'll support the next plan secondly, if, if it goes to vote for that. Thank you.
Ms. Franklin, you, you there to go ahead now?
Yes, yes, thank you. I just wanted to find out, I'm still a little bit, a little bit confused about how the contact tracing in the community is going to impact our decision to hit that mark for February 1st, you know, that you, that you've put out in your, your proposal. Because I agree that people, you know, I, I wouldn't actually have a hard time saying, okay, great, let's, let's focus on February 1st. If I felt like that, that the mark wasn't going to keep moving, because I do, through listening to all these discussions, I do feel like, unfortunately, you know, we're going to get to February 1st, and I, I agree, this moving target is frustrating for people. I, I've seen it in hundreds of emails, and, you know, just listening to everybody tonight, you know, the moving target is frustrating. It's frustrating for people that want to get kids back to school, because they obviously get a mark, they get some hope that they're going to be able to get back to face-to-face. And it's also frustrating for teachers, because they're, they get frustrated because they're concerned that they're going to have to go back to school. So, that moving target is frustrating for everybody, I, I think. And my, my, my fear is that we say February 1st, which I wouldn't have a hard time with if I knew that that was a realistic target, but after listening to Dr. Lindsay tonight, I feel like, I, I wasn't confident that she thought that we were going to be looking at a February 1st, based on the community and the contact tracing requirements that she has and, and is not able to meet right now. So, I guess my question, Dr. Spence, is, do you feel like February 1st is a realistic, in, in regards to the contact tracing that you mentioned earlier, in regards to the possibility of vaccines? Do you, do you realistically feel like February 1st is a realistic target? Because all of a sudden, then we get to mid-February, and then all of a sudden, it's spring break, and then it's Easter, and, you know, I just feel like there's constantly going to be something that comes up that is, is going to be preventing us from getting these kids back to face-to-face instruction. And I do think that you truly do want to see kids get back to face-to-face, or you wouldn't have proposed, you know, the, the January 19th date in the first place. However, I do get concerned that, you know, we're not listening to those parents and the children who are wanting to get back to face-to-face and, and really are handcuffed right now because they don't have a choice. And so, you know, we, if, if we truly say we have to listen to, we have to listen to everybody, we really do have to listen to everybody. I have read the hundreds of emails from the teachers, from the, the folks that do not want to come back, but we also have hundreds of emails from other people that do, and I, I feel like their voices do need to be heard. And, and just like Laura said, you know, we, we all have risks every day when we're driving a car, we, you all drove there tonight, even though you know that there's a possibility that you, you could get into an accident, or, or something worse. And I'm afraid that we're not, we're not actually looking to represent everybody in this, you know, in this community right now. And all voices should be heard, because their fears are, are real as well. So, do you feel like February 1st is a realistic target?
So, let me, let me try to answer that best I can. The, the alternative to establishing a target is to establish none. And in the establishment of none, pick, pick another measure, or stay where we are, which I've heard several people say. You know, we like, we like the metrics we have now, or we're comfortable with those, stay with those. In, in that scenario, there's wide agreement, we're not likely to have kids back in school this year. And that's a bit of a, that's a concern to me, based on everything we've talked about with, with the need to have children in school. And based on what I, I really want to emphasize, I believe to be the evidence that it is safe for our children to be in school with our teachers if we have all of those mitigations in place. And the reason that I've proposed the delay is because I don't, I heard directly from Dr. Lindsay for the first time, a recommendation that we not open for in-person instruction on the 19th, because she did not feel they could provide optimum support with contact tracing, and simultaneously heard the same thing from my internal team, Mary Shaw, sharing that information with me as she shared with you earlier this evening. And so, in trying to think about, okay, what, what does that mean? And I completely agree, Ms. Franklin, about, you know, if we, so we set that date, and then is that an arbitrary date? Well, my conversation with, with Mary was that that gives us three weeks to work with the Health Department to get some answers to some questions that quite frankly, we've asked, right? So, we proposed over the break, providing more contact tracers, and asked the question, could they work for you if we paid for them, so that they could do that community-based work that you're talking about? We don't have an answer to that yet, but I would like to think that within three weeks, we could have an answer to that. To pursue conversations about what other resources we might be able to provide as a school district that would support the Health Department's work, not just our internal work, to, to make it so that we had confidence that as of February 1st, that mitigation is in place. Because I'm confident, as I've said before, about the other four. And, and so, do I think three weeks is enough time to really dig into that conversation with the Health Department? I, I believe it is. But, you know, can I predict with absolute certainty that that will be the case? No, I can't. Do I think, to, to some questions about the, the trends themselves, do I think there'll be stabilization in this data by February? The modeling suggests yes, by mid-February, we'll see some stabilization. One of the reasons that I suggested the phasing of the lower and then the higher group versus, for example, which you heard, you know, some folks mentioned tonight about Chesapeake bringing everybody back at once, was for the monitoring of the effectiveness of our mitigations, but also bringing the adolescents back a little bit later when we thought the trend might stabilize, as Dr. Lindsay suggested. So, it wasn't discounting that entirely in our proposal. I, so, I mean, that's probably the best answer, Ms. Franklin, I can give you, is I, I believe we can lean into that conversation for three weeks, but that's also why I was suggesting that, you know, I, we may need to be able to push that back further if we're unable to accomplish that. I know people don't like that moving target, but the only other moving target is an indefinite suspension of the idea that children may return to school. So, I think that's kind of the issue in front of the board. Right? It's either create a target date for the return of students to school based on the data that was shared with you by the physicians that came and talked to you about this, and those who've advocated for it subsequent to that. Create a date for coming back to school, plan for that, give people time to wrap their heads around that, and give me and my team time to make sure that that mitigation is in place because of that concern that Dr. Lindsay expressed this morning in a memo about not being able to do that. And, and the alternative being, don't set a plan for that, remain in the current plan, which doesn't allow for the possibility at, at this stage that we would get back in any, in any short timeframe. I don't believe the benchmark of vaccination is a good benchmark, Dr. Lindsay doesn't suggest it, as you pointed out. And the reason I don't think that's the case is because that's a, that's an indefinite timeframe, and it's well into the future. All of the, all of the thinking on that is suggesting that you're, you're well into the spring, March or April, before you're getting close to being able to get our employee group appropriately vaccinated. So, I'm not, I don't think that's the benchmark we should be thinking of, and I don't think, again, that's based on the evidence. And that just seems to be the thing we just keep, you know, going past, and I, I realize that, that, you know, people want to disagree with the evidence. I guess I'm just not there. I'm not there disagreeing with the evidence. I believe the evidence is right, and I'm seeing it with, you know, across the country and, and, you know, other places, so I'm making the best targeted guess I can, Mrs. Franklin, relative to our ability to get contact tracing in place.
Well, and, and thank you for that, because, you know, I've talked to several elementary schools, parents, students, grandparents, and, you know, for the short time they were able to return, they felt like Virginia Beach Schools did an amazing job, did an amazing job on being able to effectively get kids back, you know, especially in that pot environment, and keep the kids safe, and, and, and they were so pleased at how that all went. And then, you know, for you to have the ability, one, one thing I liked about your plan was, we have the ability then to be able to, you know, close down just a small portion, we don't have to close down all the schools, we can close down a small portion of the schools. So, yes, I think that we have to do this effectively and safely, but, you know, I, I really want to make sure that we are working towards representing the whole community, and that would mean, you know, getting, you know, these kids back that have chosen option one to face-to-face instruction at, you know, at sometime soon, because it does feel like it just is constantly, you know, one thing after another, then there's another reason why we, they can't go back, and it's frustrating, because they don't have any choices for those that want to choose option one. And, and I do believe that we have to listen to their voices as well. I, you know, I certainly have listened to all the other people that don't want to come back, and I understand, I do understand, I don't want them to think that I don't commiserate and, and understand their fears, but we also have to represent everybody, and that includes the option one folks as well. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And, Mrs. Felton is on, I just want to throw in to the mix an obvious remark, but we're not sitting here plotting, create, trying to create, this isn't refuting anything that's been said here in chambers, but the reason there have been these moving targets is we're dealing with a virus that's a moving target. So, I just wanted to say that. Okay, Mrs. Felton?
Thank you, Chair Ryan. I'd just like to say, I'm extremely appreciative of all the speakers who either called, or came, or stood before us tonight to give their sentiments, and they're passionate about how they feel. Even all the emails that I received, and I want to thank those that I had a conversation with, and I want to apologize to those that I missed your call, but I tried to get, those that I missed, I tried to call you back. But I am just, I really appreciate all of you, because we hear you, we hear your voices, and we do take everything that you have either said or written into consideration. At the end of most of my conversations with some of the teachers, they say to me that I know this is a hard decision, and there is no easy answer. That is a general statement that is made after we talk. You're absolutely right, Dr. Spence, people need to know a plan, they need to see something, they need to know that we have something in place for them to hang their hat on. And one of the teachers that I, I talked to, she said to me that the matrix that we presented to them early on in the fall, to her, it was the holy grail, because it was something that she could hang her trust on, which gave her hope that we were looking out for them if things went downhill. And for some, just like you mentioned earlier, Dr. Spence, we're not in these words, but they're saying, you know, it's hard for them to unsee what they saw, what we placed before them at first, and the, the confidence that we had in the decision that we made. I would be the first to say that, you and I've had conversations, and I, I've expressed to you, it was a hard decision for me because I thought about lost students, I talked about educational loss, I, I talked about a gap that was already there would be, would proceed to open wider, I, I talked about the inequities of all that was happening. We had those conversations, it was hard for me to say, yes, close, and do, but I saw that the health mitigations that were come on the board, that we come on the board, that we had to make a decision in order to keep our students safe. I would say that we should respect Dr. Lindsay's title. She is the person that the federal COVID advisory team called her the traffic controller for this area. She is the one to direct and keep us informed of all the state, local, and national things that's going on. And I wouldn't downplay her being just the one person advisory. I would say that she has a lot of the information that is coming from the area, the top, and is being sought down to us as well. I do appreciate her taking the time because she is over more than just one division. And she took time out. She had four or more that she had to address that evening, but she chose us to come to us and speak to us as one of those. I'd just like to say that I like what Ms. Weems has said too, how she explained how we need to get on board and do the things that we need to do and explain to the public how we're moving forward. I like some of the suggestion that Ms. Owens has made. I do not want us leave out without making some substantial, go ahead with it. I like what she had said about waving back and forth. That's what a lot of them said, the goalposts keep being moved. And I can digest the February 1st with a little bit of consideration in moving forward. So I'll just hold my points there and come back later. Thank you.
Anybody else with questions or discussion related to the motion on the floor?
Madam Chair, at the risk of delaying your conversation further, I just want to address this idea of like yanking the rug out from under people and changing the game with the metrics. I want to just talk about that for a second. Because it is, not that particular piece of it, but just hearing our teachers' concerns, I mean, it's difficult for all of us to listen to that and I know that and to not be empathetic to that. I want to remind folks how that happened. So in November, we had to close school because of our metrics. You all remember we did that, right? We said, I think it was you, Ms. Owens, you asked, what's your bright line for closing schools? And I said, it's when the metrics go to red, red, because that's what the plan says. And they went to red, red, and we closed school before Thanksgiving. There was substantial community input after that happened. You all remember that. A lot of people who were not happy that that happened. And there was a request by at least one member of the board at that time that they wanted to hear prior to the winter break from some doctors about what they think we should do next. Right? So that's what we did. If you remember, that last meeting in December, you all had a briefing from some, from these physicians that we've talked about. They shared their thinking at that time. Subsequent to that, provided you with some written information, kind of towards the end of the holidays as we deliberated in preparation for the meeting that occurred last week. And, you know, I was asked at that time, when you heard that information, to come back with some recommendation on what to do next. So, and as we talked about at length last board meeting. So that's what I did. I took the information that I have and the evidence that I believe is, I mean, not making that evidence up. I mean, it's there. That evidence that, and even Dr. Lindsay said tonight and said it in what she wrote, that there is evidence that transmission is low in schools. And then she puts the caveat with that in school, it seems to be in schools where there's low risk and there are studies that point to it, can be in schools where there's moderate risk in the community. There's several that talk about, it can be in higher-risk environments. You know, some of the schools that were referenced by speakers tonight about some of the schools out in the Midwest that are doing that, they tend to be private schools, so I don't know if you can compare them and I don't want to get into that. But I took the evidence and the data that was before me and I brought you a recommendation, which I was asked to do. And so that's what you had. The reason it's changed this week, not trying to keep moving the goalposts, is because I got new information from the Health Department. And that was that they don't feel comfortable with their ability to support the school division with contact tracing in this moment. But I think there is, I think there are ways for us to work on that. You heard Mary talk about that. There's ways for us to work on that. And that the change in the date here gives us time to do that. And that just goes back to Ms. Franklin's question, do I think we can get it done by then? I think we can make some progress, but I don't have the exact answer. But at any rate, this wasn't an effort to pull the rug out from anybody. This was, okay, we're in a totally new place than we've been to this point. And so let's hear what the medical community has to say and then based on that, what do we do next? Now, had the medical community come in and said, in this, in this environment, you should 100% not be opening schools, you should stick with your metrics, that would have been my recommendation, but that's not what they said. And I felt an obligation to bring you a recommendation that was built off what we heard. And that's what I did. And, you know, I know to everybody's point, it is difficult, there are no right answers. And, you know, really what's before you is, just do you agree with that? And if you don't agree with that and you don't vote for it, then my assumption is we stay where we are with the metrics that we have. But then that means until we're out of red, we don't return for in-person instruction. So I don't think that's the right, I don't think based on what we've heard, that's the right approach. But I think clearly that, I mean, I just think that context, just providing that kind of context again, so that people know this wasn't some sort of fly-by-night effort to pull the rug out from under our team. You know, that great consideration was given to this.
Mrs. Weems?
Yeah, just a quick question, Dr. Spence. You said something that kind of, I guess, surprised me and maybe I didn't hear it right, but you said you contacted the city about contact tracers over the break and they haven't gotten back with you. Well, what can we do? Because that's obviously key and our community keeps speaking to us and asking us, what can we do? What can we do? Well, what can we do to make sure that these contact tracers, however it's going to happen? I mean, I'm just surprised that you didn't hear back, first of all. And I know, you know, so what can the community or what can we do as a board to make sure the city is doing some huge campaign or whatever to get more contact tracers? I mean, I know Mary Shaw said some things that we're doing and that we've done with the athletic trainers, but obviously we need to do a lot more. So is there anything that we can do to help you or that the community can do? Because they're, they're kind of like, what can I do to help? Or how can we get this moving?
Yeah.
Do you have any suggestions on that? Or?
I don't this evening. I think it requires further conversation with Dr. Lindsay and her team. And that's something that Mary and I have talked about and committed to try to do in these next three weeks. It's one of the, I mean, obviously quicker than that so that we could then do something about it, but I don't have a direct answer for you this evening.
Okay. Well, if you can think of anything that we can do to help that process go as quickly as can, please let us know. Thank you.
And Dr. Smith, I do agree with Ms. Weems on that, whatever we can do to help you to mitigate this, I'm all in for. But just in the defense of the teachers that I talked with concerning their fears, I cannot measure a person's fear and say with your freedom and just dismiss that. Your fear is your fear. I have fears that might not be your fear, but when you are surrounded, and I just said, when you're surrounded, you have experienced it, and not to get personal, when you have experienced and you're seeing the agony of what this COVID can do and how many they can wipe out. I'm dealing with a family that whole household was wiped out, talking with them. And when you're dealing with things like that, you speak your, you speak your truth. And I don't think they are saying that the rug was yanked out of them. They just need to have that trust that you're looking at all of their concern or you're even addressing those concerns. And like I go back to again, your fear is your fear. And when you see it and you see it happening, unfolding before you, you talk it in those ways. Now, you know, I could go into even with my family, I'm surrounded by medical people and I have them constantly talking in my ear. And one works over CHKD and he's there and pumping me with information as to what is really going on, but because of HIPAA and a lot of things that he said, there's a lot of things I cannot tell you what's going on. And I even, I hate to put it out, even on this public mic, but there are some devastating things that they are seeing that is happening to some and to, and I go back to the African-American, Hispanic, and the Brown community. They're very devastated and they're just, they're just speaking their truth, not that it's being yanked, but they're speaking their truth to you and us as school board members.
Chairwoman Ryan, please add Ms. Melnick to the queue. Okay, you're on, Ms. Melnick. Now, we're going to try and get to start our voting.
Obviously, this is important to everybody. We started this meeting nearly 10 hours ago, but I just want everyone to remember that we are doing the very best that we can. I know you guys all agree with me, but we are in line with every school district around us. Portsmouth, Norfolk, Hampton, Newport News, Williamsburg. The only person who's making a move is the only district who has a Department of Health that has been aggressive with the vaccines. And they're probably halfway there. And I hope that we can be more aggressive and I hope that at some point, we can stop comparing our very large public schools to private schools that have, like Norfolk Academy, for example, 1,200 students with upwards of 30% of their students who join virtually on any given day. It's 20% on any given day, but it goes as high as 30%. Schools that are able to test their students weekly, group testing, not allowed in the school if there's a surge, or students who can just zoom in at will. We have to stop comparing ourselves to those very small groups. And we have to remind the public that as frustrating as this is, we are doing the very, very best we can. And so if I'm the last one to speak, then I actually call the question, please.
Okay, are we ready to vote on the substitute motion? Would you like to?
I know. She said, call the question and that takes two-thirds to pass the debate.
I wanted to say, but I never support calling the question, so.
Please restate.
There's no debate on calling the question.
You have to, but you have to second, right?
Madam Attorney?
There is no debate on calling the question.
There's no debate on the vote.
A second, okay. So we need to restate the substitute motion since.
We're calling the question. We're voting on whether we're going to discuss.
Voting on that. Excuse me.
It takes two-thirds to pass.
Well, I think we need, right now, there was nobody else in the queue for me to know to know how to vote. I need to know if somebody else needs to say something. I understand.
Calling the question, so. It's basically.
Calling the question means end debate and you have to then vote if, and it has to be passed by two-thirds.
All right. So please, with a show of hands to Mrs. Melnick's, call the question. Raised hands.
So there's only four. Unless Ms. Melnick, there's five.
Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin, how do you vote?
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit confused. What are we voting on right now?
It's a closed debate.
To end debate and not allow any more questions.
Does anybody, is anybody else in queue for questions?
I had one more.
There is one.
Yeah, somebody has kind of asked question.
That's all I was trying to establish. Okay.
No one's in the queue.
Well, Mrs. Manning had raised her hand. So Ms. Franklin, how do you vote?
Well, I guess I vote yes unless there are more questions, but if someone is in queue, then I would say that we would, we allow everybody to put their voice in.
So.
Yes or no?
Has to be a yes or?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand. Is there somebody who still had questions or not?
Yes.
I hope there wasn't. At the time, there was not.
Well, I didn't know she was going to call the question.
Yes, that's right. She was.
It doesn't matter. She had one too.
Okay. Okay. So let's.
Well, I guess I vote no then in regards to, if there are people that still have questions, then I vote no.
Okay, so let's get through these remaining questions, Mrs. Manning and Ms. Owens.
Yeah, I mean, mine's real quick and I just, I, you know, have never tried to shut down anybody else's comments before. So I'm still, I'm still kind of stuck on Ms. Weems's comment and I just, I'm very concerned that we, that Dr. Spence asked the Department of Health something before holiday break and that pertains to why we have to change these metrics right here regarding contact tracing. We've offered help and we still don't have a response and yet we're still looking to the Department of Health as the factor of why we're changing all of this. And I just really hope that we put pressure on the Department of Health to do a better job of working with us on that. That's a big concern of mine and I know at the city council meeting this evening, they shared concerns with departments of health's rollout of the vaccine here in Virginia Beach as well. So I really have some concerns of relying on the Department of Health and making our decisions and how we're moving forward to get our kids back into school.
Okay, Ms. Owens?
You know, I'll actually wait until after this. We're going to vote and then we're going to talk about the other, the original.
If there is anything more to talk about, right.
So you don't have a question here? It's more of a comment and so if it's just question time, the comments are good? Okay.
Make it, if it's, let's be efficient.
Sure. I just want to make sure that it doesn't go without saying, when we're, because it was mentioned about pulling the rug out from people and the feelings associated with that, that I would be remiss if I didn't say that I am concerned about the effects of this decision on students who have chosen virtual, who we know were disproportionately minority students and minority families, that in the virtual classes, they've already been set up so that the virtual classes are larger than the classroom classes because of space and for all of the reasons that we had to do that. We know, virtual or not, that smaller class sizes are more beneficial to student success. And so the virtual classes are already set up, whether they're in-person or not, that the larger classes are serving students less efficiently. And that parents who chose the original option under the understanding of the original metrics will now, those who are uncomfortable, be changing their students into virtual as well. And so disproportionately minority students who are already in larger virtual classes are going to be put in a situation where their classes get larger than what they are. They're going to get even less individualized attention than what they are currently getting right now. And once those classes max out, the option is going to be that those families get a different teacher and go to VLC. And so I would be remiss not to make that point as a point of concern when we're looking at the most vulnerable populations and how our decision is going to affect or improve or worsen situations for those populations. And it is one of the concerns that I have about moving forward with the numbers at a point that is so much above what people originally agreed to.
And if I may throw out, and I'm sure it's already on the radar of Dr. Spence and Dr. Robertson, but it might be an opportunity for a few extra teachers who want to teach virtual. I know it's always based on each school and student scheduling, right, Dr. Robertson? But that hopefully that would be a possibility to address that concern and also accommodates the interest of some teachers who might still be looking to go virtual. All right, anybody? Dr. Robertson, but that hopefully that would be a possibility to address that concern and, and also accommodates the interest of some teachers who might still be looking to go virtual. All right, anybody?
I just have one thing to say, just to clarify real quick, if you don't mind.
Please.
So I just wanted, just wanted to clarify. I said it was a perception sent to us by many teachers, or I, I said it was a perception. The perception is that we pulled the rug out from people, meaning what we, with people choosing one way or the other back in July, August, September, they chose one way, they went with those metrics, they made their choices, and the perception is now we pulled the rug out from under them. So it's a perception thing, okay? And, and, and you know, we all know perception is reality. So, just to, I just wanna clarify that. Nobody said it really happened, it's just a perception.
Okay, so with that, um, now if I may ask you, Mrs. Manning, to repeat your motion.
Sure, I make a proposal.
Your substitute motion.
My substitute motion that, um, we approve Dr. Spence's plan that he presented to us last week. It's up on the screen right now, that we return option one, students, um, in the first group back to, on January the 19th, with the second group returning on February the 8th and changing the method of school closures to allow him in consultation with the Department of Health to, um, close individual classrooms or schools as he sees fit.
Okay, with that, uh, show raised hand if you agree, if you approve, agree. Ms. Melnick, how do you vote on the substitute motion?
No.
Ms. Franklin, how do you vote on the substitute motion?
I vote yes, because I would have voted yes tonight anyway.
Thank you. And all opposed? Show a raised hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have four, we have four yeses to the substitute motion in Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Weems, Ms. Franklin, and we have seven no, not, noes in, uh, Ms. Melnick, uh, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Owens, Ms. Felton, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Rye, and Ms. Holtz. So the substitute motion did not pass.
Madam Chair, you may want to at this time consider amending the initial motion you made. Your initial motion was to consider the plan as initially presented to you by Dr. Spence, which also include, he offered to withdraw the piece about his authority to make a decision. Uh, you actually just asked to consider. I think you want to put a motion on the floor or amend your motion to state that you're either gonna do the, what's up on the board, which is the phased opening with February 1 and February 22nd without Dr. Spence having the authority to make it into, and then you need your second to agree that that. Okay, well, Mrs. Weems, would you please?
Yes, I'll, um, move to approve Dr. Spence's, um, plan up there on the screen with leaving out, um, the section that would give him authority to make that decision.
So it's a subs, a new substitute motion, but it's really clarifying the initial motion.
Well, gonna need a little bit of clarification and I apologize. Um, I, I think you should just be a little bit more specific, leaving out the section around the authority to delay that further. Because in the original conversation, as was pointed out by Mrs. Manning, there still has to be that authority to close individual schools and classrooms based on the direction of the Health Department, should we move forward with opening schools on those dates.
So, I, I'm not clear what the motion is actually. I make the motion.
You need to do my part.
I make the motion to, um, accept Dr. Spence's recommendation to phase the return of students, um, on February 1st, elementary through sixth and self-contained special, special education, and then also, um, on February 22nd for other students, to include giving him the authority to close individual schools, but to not give him authority to make a decision to, um, delay the opening. That has to come before the board.
A second to that. Mrs. Manning.
I'll second. I'm just confused with what happened with the original motion.
My, uh, it was my request to clarify, cause what actually Mrs. Rye says is that you would consider the motion as initially put out there, but he, he had, it was only during the discussions, the deliberations that he said he would withdraw the piece about his authority, so.
So Ms. Riggs withdrew her motion?
She didn't. This is a substitute motion being made by Mrs. Weems in an attempt to clarify what it is you actually want to do. It's a substitute motion.
Okay, sure, I'll second.
Are you saying this is a substitute motion to what the virtual plan is?
Yeah, because we didn't officially say that we, we wanted Dr. Spence to have to, he, he volunteered to say, we'll just leave that off the table, that I could make that decision to delay schools. But we didn't officially say that, so this is officially put in and in the motion. That it's gotta come.
Exactly what is the motion?
Can you, can you give me a copy of it? I don't have it in reading.
The motion, and it's very similar to the initial motion, but there are conditions on it and that's what we were trying to capture what you were all saying, cause if you went back the initial motion, it wouldn't get what you wanted. What the current substitute motion on the floor is, is to accept the phased return of students per the recommendation of Virginia Department of Health in January, February. There will be no in-person instruction for the next two weeks, which is basically one, January 4th through, um, January 15th. On, on Jan, February 1st, you would then start phasing back in the elementary through sixth graders, the self-contained students return to in-person instruction. You will then monitor for the effectiveness of that health and safety mitigation, roughly a three-week period, and then with an intent that possibly by February 22nd, you'll begin returning the middle and high school students for, uh, in-person or hybrid model. You will also at that point allow Dr. Spence to have the authority to shut down individual schools, should it become necessary based on the conditions in the schools. However, if his intent is to delay further opening in-person, he needs to bring that back to the board for, for the decision. So he will not have the authority to, you know, all authority to shut down all in-person, but if he has to make that decision, he will come back to you. Did I state that properly, Mrs. Weems?
Yes. Yes, I wanted to make a substitute motion, uh.
It's okay, because you, you only, you can have two, but your last substitute's gone away, so this is okay.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, the substitute motion that I'd like to make would be that, uh, we move forward with, uh, Dr. Spence's plan of a February 1st, uh, goal to, to get the elementary and pre-K grade six self-contained, uh, as written there, if the community positivity rates shows a decline for seven days or after the first week that we see a decline for seven days and all mitigation standards are met. Um, and then the, that next group would come in either on February 22nd, if the February 1st one starts on time, or whenever three weeks after the first group started.
Is there a second? Mrs. Anderson? Okay. Do we need discussion before voting on this substitute? I mean, she just stated it. Does anybody need Ms. Owens to restate it, including our two Zoom participants? You would like it restated? Okay.
Okay, right, cause it's very, very difficult on, on our end, um, zooming in, so.
Okay, can you hear me okay, Kim?
Yes.
Okay. My substitute motion is that, uh, we move forward with, uh, Dr. Spence's, uh, plan that he's, uh, put for the first group to, uh, start February 1st if the community positivity rates shows a decline for seven days or after the first week that we see a decline for seven days and all mitigation standards are met. And then that next group, the February 22nd group, can start February 22nd if the February 1st timing worked out. If the February 1st group ended up being delayed, then the next group would start three weeks after, as long as, uh, things were showing the way we expected them to.
So I have a question, I'm sorry, I, I apologize, but I have a question on that. So does that mean that if we have, we get to February 1st and then we have to have a rediscussion and a revote, beca, if the seven days are not met at that point, or I, I just, I, I feel like, it just feels like we're continually kinda moving the, the post. So I'm just, in, in your motion, Jessica, are, are you saying that we would have to meet on February 1st then, or have a rediscussion on February 1st, or, but we're still looking to the February 1st? I'm, I'm just confused about what happens on February 1st then.
Okay, February 1st, if we've met the, uh, seven-day decline and we're able to have all our mitigation standards met, we move forward with the plan. We don't have to come back and further discuss it. If we haven't met that, then we would, uh, have our first group start, uh, after the first week that we see a decline for seven days.
And, and we had a, we have a second on the floor, okay, Mrs. In.
I seconded it.
All right.
May I speak?
Yes, and then Mrs. Hughes.
So I just wanna clarify, because what, what this basically means, it doesn't have to mean that it has to come down drastically, it just means it has to decline. It could even decline by 1%, but we need to see a decline, cause we need to see a trend of a decline. And so that, that's how we came up with this, this idea that we want to see a decline, cause 20%, as, as we were, as was pointed out earlier, is, is really, really high. It's, we've never been this high. So if we even see a decline for seven days in a row of 19%, then that would work, but that's, that's showing a decline. And then it goes along with basically what Dr. Lindsay said earlier, that either stabilize or decline. Those, that was part of the caveat that she talked about earlier. That was one of the things that she mentioned. Um, and as well as, um, so, so either, if it doesn't happen by February 1st, it might happen that following week, so that's why we put in there, or the first week that we see a decline.
But it's not just a decline. You also said all five mitigation standards.
And all, well, that's, that stands to reason, cause that's what held us up anyway tonight, was the, one of the five mitigation standards wasn't met. So, um.
And I'm not part of the discussion, but what happens if they can't get enough contact tracers in place by then?
Well, that, that was already understood, that if that didn't happen, we weren't gonna, we weren't gonna go.
No, it's something that's not your control. That, that remains a condition of this, this substitute motion. All five have to be in place in addition to the decline.
Dr. Spence already mentioned that that was part of his caveat, that he, he was, that was a holdup for him in the first place.
Let's let the others weigh in.
It's not really cha, it's not really changing a whole lot. Thank you.
Mrs. Hughes, then Mrs. Manning, then Mrs. Weems, then me.
I guess I'm just kinda curious, cause Ms. Owens was adamant against setting a date, but then, I guess you introduced this after Beverly wrote this and passed it to you. What changed during that time?
I wanted, as I said the first time, to be in line with the recommendation from the Department of Health with a decline, which is what was, what we're asking for. I wanna see a decline before we move forward. I want us to put weight on the written recommendation that we received from the medical director.
All right, Mrs. Manning.
So my biggest problem with this is that it says that, I mean, I, I don't like the extra stipulations in it. Uh, we could have, we could, we could decline by 5% for five days and then it goes up by 3% and then back down 5%. And our kids are yet out again even further. So I, I, I can't, I can't support that and, you know, all the additional stipulations, I just can't.
Mrs. Weems?
Yeah, um, we could decline by a half a percent for six days, go up 1% on the seventh day, then we gotta start all over. Then we do, we decline slowly for five days, we have a very small increase, gotta start all over. So I, I can't, I can't support that. But thanks anyway.
In my view, that there's subjectivity involved with, with, with the, at least one, if not all of the mitigations, that we rely on the superintendent to come back and tell us he's satisfied with the mitigations, but we don't have necessarily specific benchmarks for each one. There's a, so I think we're getting into the micromanaging realm and kind of, and I'm thinking of the discussion we've had for the past two hours where I'm satisfied that what we settled on, that this would be our date and we will rely on him to come back to us if, you know, X, Y, and Z don't transpire. So I, I can't support it either.
So do we, I'm, I'm sorry, ladies, do we have a motion on the floor for the original? Um, I'm, I'm, there's, there've been a few motions, so, and I'm, it is kind of hard to hear. So do we have a motion on the floor for, uh, Dr. Spence's original, not original, but the, the amended proposal that he provided with what's showing on the screen, um, along with the fact that he will, um, have the authority to, is that still on the floor or is that, I'm sorry, I, I just wanna make sure that I, that I know what I'm voting for.
Yes, that was on, and now there's been a substitute to that. So we would, we still have to vote on this, this, this new substitute that's adding further restrictions and then depending on the outcome of that vote, we'll go back to what you just referred to, Ms. Franklin. Does that help?
So it's Ms. Owens' substitute motion with the extra mitigations that's on the floor right now. Ms. Weems is, when, when you have that as a substitute motion, she, that motion gets priority before Ms. Weems's can be voted on.
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just for my clarification, uh, Chairwoman Rye, could you explain your, what you said? Could you extend on what you were saying about this substitute, why you want, uh, I just need to know, just to clarify, maybe I get a little sense of where I'm going.
The extra restrictions for me, I mean, even Dr. Lindsay isn't saying it has to decline, that she says or stabilize. So to me, that's going a step beyond even what Dr. Lindsay's recommending. And with regard to a requirement about all mitigations, I think there's subjectivity involved with that, that, uh, there's no specific benchmarks. How do we measure that other than, you know, Dr. Spence is already planning to come back to us if there's an issue with the contact tracing. Um, I don't know if that helps or not, in terms of my reasoning.
May I explain that?
And then I felt, and I needed to say it, I feel it's really getting into micromanaging at that point, because these are, we've already had a two-hour discussion on the merits of this and for some, it's still not soon enough, but that there was enough rationale for it. Yes, Mrs. Anderson?
So, um, the mitigation standards is not a change. That's what held us up tonight. One of the five mitigation standards was not in place, okay? The tracing, that's the only thing that was missing. All the other things, Dr. Spence, am I correct on that? You already said all of the other things were in place except for that, except for the tr, the tracing element. So this is not a change. The mitigation is not a change whatsoever. It's not adding extra, um, uh, standards or anything like that. It's the same thing that we already have. We already have that and that's what held us up tonight to begin with and what, what Dr. Lindsay said. So, and that's why Dr. Spence said he changed it, because the tracing part of it was not there. The only thing that's different is that, is that we're basically asking to see a decline from 20%, which is where the city is right now. So, um, you know, I mean, it could climb to 25% and then all of a sudden, one week, we see 23%. It's still a decline of seven days. Hopefully, it's not gonna climb any higher, I'm hoping, but we don't know. But what if we say we're gonna do this and then all of a sudden, you know, in two week or three weeks, it's, it's up to 24%, but we have all the mitigation standards in place. Yet, I mean, I can't imagine that we would be able to do tracing at 24%. They're having a hard enough time in this city at 20%. So, the only change really is the So, the only change really is the fact that we would put in here a caveat, a caveat in here, an amendment that basically says, you know, if we see a decline for seven days, or if that doesn't happen by February first, basically it states that the first week that we see a decline.
And I'm just pointing out, there's five mitigation categories, and none of them are listed on this plan, so why would we list one and not the other four, and just introduce that extra element where that's already understood, that, I mean, motions aren't supposed to... Dr. Spence, do you care to weigh in at this point?
I'd like, I'd like to hear, because that basically is what you said, you know? One of the mitigation standards was not there.
And Mrs. Weems first, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I still want to, if we're worried about always moving the goalposts and never giving anybody an answer, and never, this is a way to keep doing that, because a decline, then we're gonna come with, well, it was only a half of a percent of a decline.
It doesn't say.
I, I know it doesn't say, but the conversation will happen, because it will maybe slightly decline, and then some of us will say that was not enough decline. Even a tenth of a percent decline, is that enough? And then, where you're gonna meet it for six days, and then one day you're not, then we're gonna start all over, then you're gonna meet it for four days, and then maybe it goes up a half of a percent, or just stays the same, but it doesn't decline, then you're gonna have to start over, that seven-day count, and it's just, to, to me, that's just not necessary to do. Obviously, if it goes way up, and Dr. Spence, that's why he's not get, that's why we took that other part out, we'll then come and we'll discuss it again as a group. But this decline by seven days is too subjective, because it, and if it just spikes up or just stays the same for one day, and it does this five weeks in a row, it declines, 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 stays, then we're still here five weeks, and nothing's happened to get these kids back in school. So I hope that we'll, we'll take a look at that, and just um, not support that part. Thank you.
Any other, do you care to weigh in before we vote on this, Dr. Spence?
Uh, I think you were asking me to weigh in on the thing, on the question about mitigations. I, I wasn't clear, I think you, the, the amendment was that all mitigations would be in place, that was included. Um, I don't know that that is a negative or, or positive, right? Like, that, in my estimation, would be a goes without saying, because that's why we're here with this changed proposal, because I came to you and said, one of the mitigations that we assess that should be in place is not. Um, so having that in there doesn't hurt, and I'm not sure it's worth, at two o'clock in the morning, continuing to deliberate on that particular piece. It doesn't hurt, it goes without saying, in my mind, that with all mitigations not in place, I wouldn't be recommending that we move forward. But if you want to put it in the motion, put it in the motion.
And the other piece? Do you have any input to the other piece?
Relative to the ti-, to the, you know, it, it's not inconsistent with the previous conversations about how we would move students in, and I, so I certainly understand why Ms. Owens would, would couch it in the seven-day decline. That, that's language we're accustomed to. I, I understand the connection to Dr. Lindsay's um, recommendations, and so if um, if that is um, if that is an amendment that provides a measure of assurance to our staff, that, that's important to me, I, I, I don't say that um, specific motion is important to me, but assurances to our staff is important to me, which is what I've been trying to do with the evidence that's been presented to, to our staff. But to Ms. Felton's point, there's a great deal of fear out there, we heard it expressed over and over again tonight, and if this is a means to provide some assurance, then certainly I think you all should weigh that.
I, I would like to say, though, I do believe, Dr. Spence, that you do have the staff's, um, you know, welfare in mind, which is the reason why I feel like we leave it in your good grace and good wisdom to, to help make a decision that way. Um, so, uh, you know, I, I'm sure that you, you're not going to willy-nilly just bring the staff back to school, a- as evidenced, you know, this evening, because you, you've changed the proposal, so I, I feel like that we have to give you a little bit of, of levity there to make some decisions as well. Um, not, not in regards to a full vote, but, you know, we have to give you some authority to, to um, you know, make some decisions for your staff.
Uh, Mrs. Anderson, and then?
I just want to say that, you know, as Dr. Spence just pointed out, we had a lot of teachers, staff, bus drivers, a lot of staff that have contacted us in the past week, telling us, letting us know that, you know, they're scared, and they have every reason to be. Because unlike doctors and nurses who treat people in the hospital for fifteen or twenty minutes, our teachers are with students all day long. So, you know, and to compare teachers with people who wear the N95 masks, teachers don't wear those all day long. They don't have gloves on in their classrooms all day long. They don't have PPE uh, gowns that they wear all day long, some of them do, I think. I think some of our special ed teachers do. But the, the regular classroom teachers do not have N95 masks, do not have PPE, do not have on gloves. They've got on a mask, and it's, in most cases, it's a type of a cloth mask, and it might be fairly good, but it's not as good as the N95 masks that our medical professionals wear. And they are with our students for extended periods of time, and in many cases, they're not six feet away, especially when they need to help someone. So, that is, this little caveat that, that we're asking here for this little amendment, it just gives a little sense of security, which is really not a whole lot, when you think about it. If you're at nineteen percent, you're sure, you're already nine points higher than we, we set in our yellow standard for last fall. Um, and I wasn't happy about ten percent last fall. I was ha-, I wanted it to be, I wanted us to be below seven percent. I just don't think this is asking a whole lot, for it to go less than twenty percent, was, which is where we are now, let's see a decline. And if it goes up to twenty-three or twenty-four percent, um, you know, we know, we need that to come down. We certainly don't, if we're having trouble doing tracing stand, tracing um, now, think what the city is going to be like at twenty-four percent. So I'm just saying, we just need to see a little bit of a decline. And I know Dr. Lindsay said to stabilize, but, you know, I, 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 maybe I should have put in, in the, in the motion that we wrote it up, you know, to stabilize, but I didn't. So, um, and I, you know, I wrote it out, and I gave it to Jessica, and, and she read it the way I wrote it. So, I'm, I'm, I, I take credit for writing this up this way, and, but I'm not ashamed of writing it this way, because I feel like this is just one little caveat that we need to give our teachers some sense of security, that we're not just gonna jump into this on February first, without having, seeing some, some type of a decline between tw-, hopefully less than twenty percent.
Are we ready?
Mrs. Anderson, and I, I, I actually understand, you know, that we, that right now, we are in a very high metric, and um, you know, I, I personally feel like it's because we're still in that two-week testing period after the holidays, you know, all of that. I, I, I actually do feel like we're gonna see a decline. Um, I'm not as worried about the decline, it's just the measure, I guess, just like Ms. Weems said, um, you know, the measure, you know, are we, are we going to have this, and then all of a sudden, we're gonna yank it back and say, no, it's not good enough? I, I guess it's just the back and forth that I'm concerned about, about in, in regards to, you know, what, what is going to be the standard that we're gonna use, you know, at this point, with all the information we have, um, to try to realistically get to that February first? So, let's just say that we have the, you know, the, the five measures in place, we've got a, a slight decline, as you said earlier, a slight decline. Are you then in favor of bringing students back February first? I guess that would be my question.
That is the way it's written. It's written, it doesn't say how much of a decline, it doesn't say a tenth, it doesn't say a half, it doesn't say anything, it just says seven-day decline, period. Could be a tenth of a percent, as long as it's not higher.
Seven straight days.
Seven straight, well, seven straight, you know, the average, the average daily, the average for seven straight days, if, is it less than?
That's not what the motion said. It said seven-day decline. It didn't say average, it said seven-day decline, that's the motion on the floor.
Yeah, that's the whole, that's the whole heartburn, is, because if you've got, if you've got six days, and you've declined a hundredth of a percent, and then on day seven, it goes back a hundredth of a percent, we start all over. And then you go four days, and it declined one percent, but on the fifth day, it goes up one hundredth of a percent, we start all over. I mean, that's the whole concern, because that, you're saying slight, okay, so if it just stays the same, okay, so then you have a decline for six days, and it stays the get, same on the seventh day, you start all over. I mean, that's the whole concern, e- especially since you're talking about such slight numbers, that there's no number, that you, you could actually stay the same, or, or, or increase it by one hundredth of a percent, and that's, that's not a decline. I mean, I, I mean, that's, that's why Carolyn said we're getting in the weeds. We're just getting in the weeds.
I just, I just don't like the fact that we have a certain date, and there's nothing to, there's nothing to give us any, any, any assurance that it could be a twenty-four percent on February first, you know? I certainly don't want students going back to school when, when we're in a surge, as we are now. And so this just gives us a little measure that the surge might be declining, so, anyway.
And I think it's been stated repeatedly that that's where we rely on our superintendent in conjunction with the Health Department, he's often said, it could be the Health Department that just says you are shutting down. I mean, we, you know, that's just understood, that if we keep getting worse, but um...
Will we come back to that?
All right, so, we, we are voting on this substitute motion, that does it need to be?
Ms. Owens' substitute motion.
Right. Does it need to be repeated, anybody? We were pretty clear on, I, our two Zoom uh, participants, are you comfortable voting now with, without repeating the motion, the substitute motion? Ms. Owens' substitute?
Yes.
And Ms., Ms. Melnick, okay, we'll proceed with a vote. All in favor, raised hand. Okay, we have five yeses, and Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Felton, Ms. Anderson, and Ms. Holtz.
Oh.
And uh, Ms. Franklin, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
All opposed? Okay, and voting no is Ms. Franklin, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Rye, and Ms. Weems. So the pass with uh, six ayes, and there's five nays. All right, that was the last agenda item. Any, are, I assume we are free to adjourn unless Dr. Spence has anything to conclude us with?
I don't have anything, Madam Chair. I, I'll just note to the board, we'll be working on communication about this in the next couple of hours.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Thanks.